Twenty-eighth meeting of the city council to order, and we will begin with roll call. Jenny?
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda in a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Item four, public hearings, it's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposal to enter into a water revenue loan and dispersment agreement. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May seventeenth.
Any written comments received for or against the proposal?
No, sir.
And Chelsea is going to speak on this, please.
So there are going to be two public hearings tonight. The first one is to enter into a state revolver fund water revenue loan and dispersment agreement for the new 1.5 million gallon water tower project. The city is financing the project with a combination of water revenue and tax increment financing. This loan will not exceed $2.8 million and will be repaid back with water revenue.
Thank you. Come on in. Or don't. Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposal? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
I need a motion then to approve item one under four A, resolution 2024 dash sixty-seven, taking additional action on proposal to enter into a water revenue and dispersment agreement. Motion?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
It's time to close the regular meeting and open the public meeting on the proposal to enter into a general obligation water revenue loan dispersment agreement. Jenny, when was the notice published?
May seventeenth.
Any written comments received for or against the proposal?
No, sir.
Chelsea's going to provide a report.
The second public hearing tonight is to enter into a general obligation water improvement loan and dispersment agreement for the same project, the 1.5 million gallon water tower project. As I previously mentioned, the city is financing the project with a combination of water revenue and tax increment financing. This loan will not exceed $2.8 million and will be repaid with tax increment financing.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for or against the proposal? I need a motion then to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting. And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel? Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving on then to item four B two, I need a motion to approve resolution 2024 dash sixty-eight, authorizing and approving a loan and dispersment agreement providing for issuance of general obligation water improvement funds, series 2024A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Motion?
Second, and I do have a questioner. Chelsea, could you, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I should give you your heads up on this, could you kind of give a general overview or on the rationale behind for the same project using the different funding mechanisms and kind of why I've gone through this model since I think we've talked about that in work sessions, but I don't know if we've talked about it.
So the city is going to finance the $5.6 million water tower project with 50% water revenue and 50% tax increment financing. And the recommendation to do that was based on that was the best thing to do for the rate payer. So we maximized paying for the water tower with tax increment financing 50% of the project so that we could keep rates as low as possible for water.
And the analysis, and I'm blanking on, what's his name's from, PFM did, which is, I think we talked about this last time, is on the website, includes this, there's a lot of information there, but that piece is on there as well. So what's that, what's that called on the website? Do you know?
It's under the financial reports.
Okay.
So we've had a motion and a second. Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Moving on to item five, presentations, we have a presentation from Matt White from Polk City Arts and Culture Committee. Matt, come on.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anything exciting to talk about like water, but I'll talk about Polk City Arts and Culture. So my name is Matt White. I am a member of the newly formed Polk City Arts and Culture Organization. So I'm here just to provide a real brief overview of our group and a few highlights of what we're looking at and some of what our key objectives are for the year. So I'll keep it short, not a lot of stuff to present at this point, but quick overview, Polk City Arts and Culture emerged through really a community need and was highlighted in the Iowa Great Places Polk City Vision Plan. A key takeaway from this plan was that we really needed an organization in Polk City that supported our arts community. And what I really want is a key takeaway from me presenting tonight is that we're not just about physical art, although it's important, our team is focused on much more. To quote from our mission statement, "Our organization will seek to provide opportunities for artists, cultural organizations, and community members to connect, create, and celebrate the richness of arts and culture." This includes visual arts, performing arts, literature, and music. So our organization is looking to encompass all of those, what goes in with the arts. And we had an organization with the community visioning, with the murals team, which was focused purely on murals, like we said, but it didn't really have any funding mechanisms or any way to store money, move money, or anything else like that. So one of the key things here is we're bringing in murals, we're expanding our scope much bigger, and we are creating a nonprofit 501(c) corporation to be able to take donations, be able to fund projects, and move forward with that. So where are we right now? We are in the early, early stages. We're finalizing our corporate bylaws, and we are focusing primarily on obtaining our 501(c)(3) status. That will take roughly a year. It's a pretty long process, very tedious. Why I'm here today, establishing public awareness, saying, hey, we're here, we're a new organization, this is what we're all about. And then really what we need to hit the ground running on and what we're working for right now is early-stage fundraising to cover organizational costs and see future projects. So if anybody wants to donate money, very willing, and if anybody wants to volunteer to be a part of the team, we're willing to take that too. So one thing I'll present on, I won't really talk much about it, I know that was presented in the last council meeting, is that we do have an upcoming project that we're working toward. Pretty tight date at this point, we're going for June 22nd. We're at Leonard Park, it's a sidewalk leading up to Leonard Park, where we will be auctioning off or selling off as free will donation sections of Sidewalk Square to families and organizations to paint within confined parameters, but hoping to raise a good amount of money to really help us get started with that. So that's all I had. Any questions? Thank you. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to item six then, public comments. This is the time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. I know we have two people who are wanting to speak. The first one is Ashley Delaney. Ashley, you want to come over? Just give us your name and your address for the record.
Yep. My name's Ashley Delaney, I live at 909 12 Books Court, Polk City, and I'm here to speak before you in favor of urban or backyard chicken keeping. It was a comment that was made at the last council meeting. I know it's not on your agenda for tonight, but there were some questions and I wanted to speak towards information that I had available. I want to start by recognizing that we actually broke this rule along with the other person that was here speaking at the last council meeting. We have three little girls that do 4H, and we were told by fellow 4H families that if we had all of our 4H registration paperwork, we were allowed to feed chickens. I fully own that I did not do my due diligence on checking up on that and actually contacted Jenny once we had gotten notice. We did them to a friend's home who is outside of city limits and is feeding the chickens for us. However, in that process, I learned a lot, and I thought I would share what I had. A couple of months ago, I shared a document about area suburbs in the Des Moines metro area and neighboring towns that touch us. Of the 18 of them, 11 allow for backyard chickens and 10 allow for backyard keeping. Most have restrictions either on the size of the lot or the number of chickens permitted. Typically, if there is a quarter acre or a half acre requirement, they allow six chickens. If there's not a lot size requirement, it's either two or four chickens. Every metro area town requires to only keep hens and not roosters for noise ordinances. And the vast majority have a property line easement of 25 feet from either neighboring buildings or the neighboring property line. It just kind of depends on the town. And the vast majority require a permit or a license, just like for a dog, a cat, any other domesticated animal that is being kept. About a month and a half ago, I did put out a change.org petition. It was shared on the two common Polk City sites. In five weeks, there was 131 signatures, all from Polk City residents. And I'll pass that, I'm not sure who to give this to, but I'll pass it on to whoever's supposed to do it yet. Jenny's supposed to be the boss, okay, I should have known that. In the past, I did go back through council minutes, and there was a note in an article that was included about a salmonella outbreak, or excuse me, an E. coli outbreak from backyard chickens in 44 states. Of the 333 individuals that were sickened by the outbreak, 331 of them were backyard chicken owners that didn't wash their own chicken eggs. So it wasn't widespread outside of the community, it was people not being educated on how to care for their own chickens and eggs that they were harvesting from their hooves. And then I did also print off two guiding documents. One is from the Iowa League about backyard chicken regulations and recommendations, which the document about who has chickens in the metro area, they all basically followed down the line A, B, C, D, their code follows this document. And then the other one that I printed off was from General Code, which is a local body advisory, and it just basically says what you're often to consider with backyard chickens, including odor and man who brought up predators. Interestingly, they're finding that as long as they are not free-range chickens, it actually diminishes the number of predators in areas the predators see the fencing and the restrictions of the birds and are discouraged by going back to that area because animals are kept and not able for them to hunt it. So as long as the birds are not free-range, they're actually seeing a reduction of predators entering into the yard if you have backyard chickens. So I'm obviously a biased perspective, I would love to have backyard chickens, but I also took about 18 months to learn about chicken keeping and the best way to reuse odor, and I talked to all my neighbors and got their permission before we did anything with our chickens. So I am in favor of it, but I also am in favor of putting in rules and regulations that make sure that we don't have one bad apple that spoils the bunch. So I'll give what I have to Jenny, and I did change a couple of things on the code requirements, so if you can understand my chicken scratch, pun fully intended, that is on there. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention was that Grimes and Dallas Center do not allow backyard chicken keeping, and both of them had it up on their consideration within the last six months. In both cases, the reason for denying backyard chickens is because they have a commercial three operation that is located halfway between Dallas Center and Grimes, and that commercial business said that they would leave the area if backyard chickens were permitted, and it raises the ability for disease to spread to their facility. However, that said, there was no one who spoke against it other than that industry. Carlisle and Pleasant Hill do not allow backyard chickens, but do have a space for people to submit 4H and FFA paperwork for up to two birds or one horse as a part of projects, and kids have to go to the council annually and present all their paperwork for Good Husband tree practices as a part of their 4H project. So there's lots out there. I think that this is something that we could do very responsibly and successfully. And I did talk to the, not city manager, the clerk of Ankeny, who did mention that like the first six months of them having chickens in Ankeny was a nightmare because people just didn't read what they were supposed to do. So they would submit for a permit, but they had less than a quarter of an acre, and so there was a lot of upset people. So I think communication could go a long way. And I know our law enforcement does not have a code enforcement officer, and so I think that level of communication, or maybe even having some volunteers that are passionate about it, that could provide guidance or help to people who are interested, could be one way that we could diminish some of the load that our law enforcement and city clerks could encounter.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, so thank you, that's a lot of good information, and particularly thank you for going to the extent of identifying Polk City residents as part of your petition. I haven't done that. I do, since this has come up back to whack, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, do we said last week, or last meeting, we were gonna revisit this, do we have a tentative timeline or target or?
I do not. The council said that they'd like to revisit it within the next 60 to 90 days, so I'll work to put it on a succession agenda.
Okay, and this will take multiple, I mean, this is, would be an ordinance change, so presumably it could take three things, right?
Yep, if we draft up an ordinance, yep.
So to get, and again, we have to make the decision, but to apply the decision to this warmer season, if there's any way to kind of closer to 30 than 60, make my preference? Is that what you said, 30 to 60?
60 to 90.
Okay. I'll forget what I said, but I understand where you're.
Thank you very much, Ashley. We have another person who submitted a card to speak, Robert Wright. Are you here, Robert Wright? None of these people are Robert Wright, so, okay. So is there anybody else who is here who would like to, didn't fill out a card but would like to speak? We'll have you come up.
I don't want to speak, I just wanted to hand out to each council member at the mayor history from 18 years ago in Polk City, how we started GIS in this town. And I think it would be interesting, I'm downsizing my office, and I came across this publication by the University of Arkansas, where the former chief of police, Mark Ballasoggs, myself, and Iowa State University employee who are invited to present GIS in small towns at the annual GIS conference.
Okay, thank you very much.
We were well accepted, and Polk City was well above that.
Okay, thank you. Jenny, would you want to, your name, sir?
Robert Schultz, 404 Gilcrest Drive, Polk City.
Okay.
Is that you on here?
You discovered me, yes. I tried to hide behind the beard, but it did not work.
I discovered you, I discovered somebody else too in one of these pictures.
Is there anybody else who didn't fill out a card who has a public comment?
Wow.
Wow, right?
So moving on.
I knew it was him, but I rather didn't.
Former career in modeling, huh?
Few years ago.
So moving on then, Cory, you're gonna come up and speak and give us some information about the new city hall.
Sure. Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Cory Sharp, I'm an architect with FEH Design. Our office is located at 604 East Grand Avenue, Des Moines. I was trying to think, the last time that I got up to speak to council was probably a little more than a year ago, when we made the recommendation to award the contractor construction of the new city hall across the street. A long way we have come since that day, there's obviously a structure standing there, and we're all very anxious to move into the new facility. So I was here just tonight to try and give you an idea of what the schedule of that looks like and the current work that's going on. As you see, it's nearly finished. We are all very anxious for the rain to stop so that we can pour a parking lot. Every time it rains, it softens up the ground, and then we can't compact it, so we wait additional time to compact it in order to then put paving on it. So unfortunately, every time it rains, it pushes us back a little bit on the parking lot stuff, but work is actively happening on the building, inside and out, as you see the metal panels continue to go up around the outside, hopefully you guys like seeing that. On the inside, there's finished painting going on, ceilings going in. I ran over there just before tonight's meeting to see a carpet had started upstairs, hopefully that starts in the next day or two. But it's really coming along. Just to give everyone an idea of where we're at, the original construction contract had a substantial completion date of May 10th. We are obviously beyond that. But I'm excited that we have a tentative schedule for a punch list walkthrough on June 14th, which will require the contractor to have a occupancy permit, so that means the parking lot will need to be done by then, as well as all the things inside the building for safety and access control and all those sorts of things. So we're excited to have a punch list scheduled for the 14th of June. I would anticipate maybe a first city council meeting, hopefully, cross our fingers, late in July, once everyone has been able to move into the building, get used to the new technology, all the furnishings are up and running, but it should be very exciting. I feel as though the general contractor's done a really great job trying to keep the project on track. We have regular meetings to try and enforce some sort of motivation to quickly finish the project, and we're all very excited about it. Be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Anybody have any questions, Cory? Yes, nope, nope. Thank you very much, sir. We're all looking forward to it too.
Yeah, thank you all.
So we will move on to item seven then, consent items, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
So moving on to eight, business items, A, resolution 2024 dash 72 approving plot of survey Peterson parcel number 2024 dash 74 and record lot tie agreement. Travis, I think you're going to say.
Travis, former city engineer. So for council's consideration tonight is a plot of survey located on the very end, East Broadway, down towards the lake. The Jamie and Shannon Peterson Revocable Trust has requested this plot of survey, and it essentially is serving as a land swap between two parcels owned by Petersons. This transfer is going from the larger southeastern lot to the smaller northwestern lot, so kind of balancing the land, more balance, the land between the two lots. It's our understanding, the purpose of this land swap is for a future home addition to the smaller home west lot. As part of this plot of survey, the property owners have provided a signed record of lot tie agreement tying this new parcel to the existing smaller parcel, making it so that this council would have to act should they ever want to split that lot back apart. This does not produce another buildable parcel on its own, it just expands one larger, or one smaller buildable parcel while reducing the area of an already more than adequate lot of the existing structure. There are no access easements, the driveways stay on each parcel, so no funky geometry as far as that's concerned. This is purely taking 24 feet from one lot, giving it to the other, tying the two. Be happy to answer any questions.
So when it says in here that it's creating a new unbuildable parcel, it just means that that parcel itself can't be built on by itself?
Correct, it is, yes.
But they can still?
Yes.
From?
Yeah, so when we use the term buildable parcel, it is as an independent entity from anything. This parcel is not buildable on its own, it will be tied and become part of the buildable parcel.
So we need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to item B, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 700 approving rezoning 36.58 acres located at 1716 East Northside Drive to be known as Sunrise Ridge Platte One from R1 to R1A. So need a motion and a second. Second. And discussion, council, we'll ask for roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
No.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Moving on to item C then, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 800 approving rezoning 7.62 acres located at 609 East Northside Drive to be known as Big Creek Commons Platte Two from R1 to R1A. Motion and a second, please.
Second.
So just to clarify on, or reiterate what I said in the last meeting, for this and the previous, for this change, my identity concerns.
So roll call then?
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Moving on to D, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 900 approving rezoning for Antler Ridge, 2.017 acres from R2 to R1, 0.116 acres from R2A to C2, and 50.144 acres from R1, R2A, and R2 to R1A. Motion and a second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
No.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to E, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1,000 approving R2A zoning district modifications. Motion and a second.
Someone?
Second.
Roll call.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Moving on to item F, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1,100, amending chapter 92 water rates. A motion and a second, please.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Item G, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1,200, amending chapter 99 sewer rates. Motion and second, please.
Someone?
Second, and just a quick point to reference the same, and I just said it, the PFM, what's it called again?
It's under financial reports.
Okay, so the, if anybody is interested in looking at how we got to the rates that we got to based on the offices, it's online, the financial report section.
Roll call, Jenny.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Item H, second reading of ordinance 2024 dash 1,300, amending chapter 166 temporary signs. Motion and a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And B1 is an option to waive the third reading. Do we have a motion and a second on that?
Waiving of third reading.
Second.
And roll call?
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
So, we'll move on to nine, and we'll begin with any comments from staff? How about the city manager?
I do have something. So, just a reminder that Polk City's special census is underway. Today, they mailed out the first round of internet self-response letters. You will receive those in the mail, and we encourage people to fill those out and respond prior to June 21st, and it says the sooner the better. Using the census letters sent to people's homes, residents can begin and end the survey in just a few minutes. For those that don't complete it, don't complete the internet self-response before June 21st, we will have local census field representatives visiting residences in the coming weeks, shortly thereafter, so the more we can encourage people to participate, the better. And I do believe that they are still looking for field representatives, and if you know anybody locally that's interested in those jobs, that can be found at USAjobs.gov, it can be found on the city of Polk City's website, the city's Facebook page, or people can reach out directly to me, and I will point them in the right direction.
Is it going to cost us less if the field agents don't have to spend as much time going door to door?
I don't know that. Maybe.
Sorry, just, just trying to give that little punch to get people to actually fill them out and save the work.
Maybe.
Okay.
So, then, we're gonna push this out on our various means of communication that this is now starting?
This is probably our most posted topic on Facebook recently. We've really been trying to encourage people to just be aware of what's happening and participate.
And the why?
Yes.
Right, and the additional road use and all the other components that go into a more accurate depiction of our population, assuming some benefits and drawbacks.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anything from council?
I do want to mention real quick, this Thursday is our first farmers' market meeting of the season. Not meeting, farmers' market event, starting at 4:00 PM till 8:00 PM. If you're out and the weather's nice, come on down.